First item of our agenda. As usual, it's minutes, but we will postpone that since we have acreage holdings here. And then we'll go on to Mike's part, and then we'll come back to you. So, Mr. Moon. So, we'll proceed just pretty much with a regular site plan. Uh, well, you've seen it before, so we totally will go back to the first one.
Yes.
Uh, so, would you review for us the changes?
Certainly. So, uh, site plan was approved before with these buildings. There was an area up here that was a mechanical room and storage. And so, with the latest application, they would like to have an office with that first unit into an office and a mechanical room. So, the chemical room back, there would be a restroom for the office. As such, there would be a need for septic system. So, we're gonna be adding a septic system. And then they wanna add a sewage, uh, dump station for the RVs and RVs. So, that was over here. So, those were the changes, was adding the office, three parking spaces, a, uh, septic system, and a sewage dump station. So, when we came in the last meeting going over, we added some of the notes to kinda clarify on what was brought up as concerns going forward. So, there's a sign that's been added, so we're, uh, sewage waste only, no hazardous waste sign. Also, a security camera that directly hooks the dump station. And then, we added the notes for, uh, the office and storage units cannot be used for housing. So, that was the concern that...
Can we, uh, turn on the logo, the squares? Well, then we lose folks over here.
Yeah, I don't, I can't hear anything.
Is that right?
You all right?
I'm good.
Did you come over? Okay, hold on.
So, the office being up here, three parking spaces, dump station. Added those, and the notes for no housing, um, in the office unit or in the storage units. And then sewage dump station is for unit renters only, no public dumping. That's added as a note. Really, only two sheets changed are the site plan with the notes there, and then our utility plan. So, we have highlighted here is the dump, uh, station tank. So, that's a, we had more detail on this, is the proposed H20 rated, it's 5,000 gallon tank. Um, it's gonna have float sensor, audible alarm, beacon, and auto buzzer. Auto buzzer will, it that multiple numbers, that will dial the management company. And then also, we have the, uh, beacon, so that's a light metal strobe outside, so they can see it here. Um, and then, based on that float, we have it set so it's, uh, 10% capacity. So, we listed down here on how many sewage dump stations for renters only, off storage and housing.
Yeah, that's true.
For how much that would be. So, the alarm set at 85% tank volume, which is 4250. And that provides 750 gallons of personal storage. So, once it hits that level, the alarm goes off, they're notified, anyone on site sees the light, and also hears the audible alarm. And then, that is approximately 10 RVs versus sewage load before you reach tank capacity. Um, so that would, that would get quite a bit of RVs coming in, up in a full group. So, 10 RVs after that alarm goes off, and that applies to the management.
What do they normally carry on?
It, it's about 80 gallons. Um, but it depends on the RV, that would be a Class A motorhome.
And this, how big a tank?
Was 80.
No, the, the tank for your holding tank?
5,000 gallon. So, the alarm would be set at 85%, so that's 4,250 gallons prior, before it goes off. Once it hits that amount, then we would have it pumped out. So, we have that moved on there as well, so it would be a licensed septic caller, so somewhere out of your septic tank.
Where's the, um, alarm?
Hold on, Mr. Switz. Uh, I think we need to, first, uh, before we get into the merits of this, we need to, uh, confirm that this is a complete application. Which, uh, everyone have any questions? Or if there's not a big, we've seen it before, or if there are big before, there are these few changes. So, no concerns about that?
Am I allowed to ask a question or not?
In, uh, in a few minutes, yes.
But it has to do with the application, wondering if runoff has been addressed on the north side of the property? Because of the ravine that runs down, so would that be, should I say that for later?
Yes, you should.
Okay.
Right. Thank you. I'd like to make the motion if I'm gonna add a future. Okay, we're looking for seconds. Seconds for Megan, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, the next thing we have to do is determine, uh, if we can determine if this project, uh, original impact, or we think these changes make any difference, and, uh, impact on... So, we need the motion, this is an audition that explains, not, uh, three jump. And a second, please?
Oh, sorry.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Uh, so now, we can, uh, let's see, the next thing is, we always have to ask, uh, people, or if you say need a site walk, uh, I re-determined that, uh, last time, that didn't, anybody feel there? Uh, is that? So, motion, no need for a site walk, please? So, move. And a second, second, second change. All those in favor?
Aye.
Uh, now, we can move on to the merits of this, uh, presentation. Uh, and that's what we'll do, questions from the letters and, uh, members. Uh, and we have one.
I'm just, I'm just curious, because I'm downstream from that ravine and worry about runoff.
Yes, so...
Coming out of my property, and I can't, I, I don't, I'm not knowledgeable in ravines.
Okay.
Just curious.
Yeah, so, I'll give you a rundown. So, this hasn't changed from what was approved last year and what's being constructed. So, this went to DES, so the Environmental Department of Environmental Services for an operation training purpose, so they review our calculations, um, and methods of use for, for handling runoff. So, in the back of the site here is a infiltration basin. So, the site kinda splits and runs most of the water towards the area of the site, to the buildings, and then into the infiltration basin. And then there's our front infiltration basin and, uh, color here, driveway color here. So, uh, water infiltration to the ground, that was permitted by the state, that hasn't changed.
So, there wouldn't be any runoff north, which is where the ravine is?
No.
No, that's...
So, that DES requirement is for the 50-year, 24-hour flood that's all...
Correct, so they, they check. So, in the permit, it covers the two-year, 10-year, and 15-year storms, so 50-year being large storm.
And that, and the requirement is that all the infiltration is dealt with on-site, right?
Yes.
Is that answered?
Yeah, mine was not about the infiltration, because also, there's the railway tracks that are pretty much blocked.
Right, and they're up higher than this.
Right, yeah, so I'm not worried about that. But it sounds like it would be any runoff, any spillage from an RV would run...
Yeah, if they, if they still, uh, sewage, it would be on the flat portion here, but, uh...
Which would end up in one of these...
Yeah, there's stone, there's stone here that would run down into the drainage basin, but, um, it's just like, it's a, it's an RV, it's a windstorm, like we can't think of you ever just want, you just hook it on, you tend not to really spill it.
Right, but you also tend not to get attention to, if it started, if it unclipped, it would be 50, 50...
Yeah, so, I mean, this is your dump, and then they're gonna store it there, so I don't think you're gonna leave it, take it off somewhere. They're looking to store them, that was the idea, was they, they'd rinse off, and then dump it in the pool.
Are all four of them built, they have?
No, so, they had, uh, difficulty getting all the, so their pre-manufactured sealed buildings, sealed buildings had difficulty getting, it took a while. So, they built these two buildings, and they're, they're starting on the east end now, so they got all the buildings shipped in this, this winter, they're getting storage, and now they're, they start early June on the south, right, with these other two.
That's all, all paved.
Yeah, so they, they paved this area where the two buildings are, striped it, um, and then, when it was only base pavement, so now they run back, and they're, uh, the concrete slabs for both of these two buildings, and then they'll finish paving everything all on its face.
Last year, all that pavement, some of that ran sideways and over the edge, not to the railroad track, yeah.
Because of this building wasn't there, yeah. So, this frame comes up with the buildings here, and then the trough is down.
Because, I mean, it was, it was considerable amount of pavement, and it ran sideways also, not just to the, not to the railroad track at all.
We discussed that with the contractors, they're gonna end up removing all the stains, I don't know why they paved it, and why they paved it over here, but, yeah, that all changes once the building's...
Because I am right directly behind that railroad track, set in it, uh... And I just did, uh, taken a while last summer. I don't want oil, it should have been brown.
Uh, we do have a comment from our, uh, code enforcement, uh, officer, uh, from the female, June Smith. After reviewing the plans for the additional storage units, the office and the RV dumping station, my main concerns are, one, the unmonitored dumping station with potential for sewage to be thrown to the ground and getting into water containment areas, causing health hazards in the area and nearby businesses. Uh, two, the office area and utility area being completely sealed and separated for storage units, carbon monoxide detection, sanitation area for office workers. Uh, you just did mention that you are putting in a bathroom for office workers, uh, in terms of the, uh, office area and utility area being completely sealed and separated, separated from the storage units?
Correct.
That's, uh, that's what this plan is. Uh, and carbon monoxide detection.
Yeah, so as part of the building permit, they, they can require that, they can put carbon monoxide detector in the, really, it should be involved in the technical...
Correct.
Um, so, the, now, I'm being monitored when it comes in, so this will be gated for people that are already in, and then the security cameras there, if it's overfilled, it automdials, so they'll, they'll get a, basically a text message on the phone, they'll get an auto call to them, saying that this is reaching capacity, and now, you have those additional tanks.
Uh, we'll also point out that we are on the aquifer protection overlay, so, uh, so, uh, does the board have any, uh, comments, questions about this? I think, uh, go ahead, Chris.
I do have a concern about, you know, you haven't mentioned anything about the dumping station itself, so that, you know, nine times out of 10, most people are gonna pay attention. And it isn't gonna be a problem, but you get somebody that's gonna be in a rush or something like that, doesn't pay attention, it spills gallons of sewage into the service. Is there any containment, you know, in the geography, and, you know, is, is asphalt gonna be sloped so that it stays there and not runoff?
Well, if we spill on the asphalt, you know, the slopes of the asphalt do runs, it's from, is the basin, basically to this corner, so it'd have to run across probably 25 feet to this area, or down this area, run into the basin. Uh, we could add a curb, you know, along that area to keep the water from running directly if someone spilled.
I would add that area, I mean, we could add 20 feet of that curb. I would be more, whether it be something like a speed bump or something that was closer to the tank itself, the inlet, so that if there was some dumping, it's not gonna run all the way across.
There's certainly space to, to do that around, where, as we can take the, closer to the building a little bit, and do a curb around that kind of thing.
Yeah, um, that, that would be only my suggestion, because it is an aquifer, and we don't want it exiting the tower, and...
So, when we go for a permit for the septic system, this tank also gets permitted with the state at that time, one of the same permit. Uh, so I'd like to have that as a detail, because it goes to the town to sign off before it goes to state for that. Instead of holding up the, uh, site plan approval, this, submit those plans following the detailing.
I'd like some sort of immediate containment, you know, closer containment, should there be a spill or some sort of, uh, an activity, you know, where somebody is rushing, doesn't cover it right, or, uh, who's this guy?
So, you're saying there should be curb around the dumping area? How can we, uh, in specific language, should address this?
You could just put it as spill containment around sewage dump station, to be handled as part of the septic permit.
Just should be that?
Spill containment. You know what I mean, it just so that it stays there, so it doesn't go all the way across the park a lot, and it's tracked in and everything else, so...
Uh, can that, uh, can that spill containment, so, and say there's 20 gallons of stuff in it, where does that 25 gallons go? Can that be pitched into a basin that dumps into the 5,000 gallon tank?
They could have it pitched back into the tank, yeah.
So, uh, dumping station, uh, with, uh, uh, drainage back into the, drainage into, uh...
Holding, holding.
Is that gonna cause all the rain, or is it gonna, I don't know.
Well, it'll have to be, so that we, pettize, but when they fill it, they flip open the valve, so in order to hook up to it, you have to unlatch it.
What was the original tank that was put there?
The, the, the tank that is over here is a holding tank, uh, oil-water separator for, for rinse-off stations, so if they bring in their boat for RV, they spray it off. Um, so it's an oil rinse separator, so basically separates oil, sands, and stuff like that, tank.
I mean, see, it had a pipe came out of it and went into that stone area, though.
Right, correct, so we, that's how we permit it with the state, because they, so they have the overflow into the filtration.
So, how, what, how is that, uh, so you've had oil separation, what, where, where does that oil go that is separated?
It's held in a holding tank.
And so, uh, and what is the, uh...
Then they call it out on the state.
So, that has an alarm on it, similar stuff?
This one is not alarmed, uh, so when they do their annual inspections, uh, for the tank, then they, they clean it out anyway, instead of having it be wait till it's full, it's separate here.
So, this isn't gonna come out of there and go onto somebody's field as raw sewage?
Uh, raw, the sewage is complete, is no overflow at all.
Yeah, well, I...
Holding tank only, it's a sealed tank, it's a septic tank, that's, uh, no outlet at all.
So, as an alignment, we...
The septic field is over here, is for the office, this is completely a holding tank, no outlet to a septic field, it's not an drainage.
Right, so as a selectman, we have a oil collection point up at the dump. People are dumping all kinds of things into that barrel and contaminating it for us to be able to get rid of. I'm just concerned that that tank might be a area to dump your used oil in, or...
No, it's for rinsing off, but if, if there's oils, you know, wax, or anything on a boat or RV, you're rinsing it off, it contains it in that tank, it's just like, it's not for dumping oil or changing your oil or anything like that.
I, I understand that, that holding tank up the dump isn't that either, but there it is, you know?
That's my concern with, yeah, septic, you have storage tanks, all it takes is one, one bad actor, dump whatever in there.
I mean, you're not gonna test the stuff that's coming out of it, right?
Yeah, the septic one, that's, the sewage dump station, and that would take anything, so if someone did dump oil into the sewage tank, when they come and pump it, they are gonna have to test it, and then, they, they end up, they're gonna charge people, saying, someone dumped in there more, here's your surcharge, because we can't, we can't wait to the, uh, to the sewage, that's what happens.
Uh, does your client have other, uh, storage facilities like this?
Hey, this is the only boat in our town that they have, and they have many, tons of, or at least a new one. If I know where they have all of it, across the, uh, facilities between contractor stores, um, self-stores, I believe they have, I mean, they have these high-day type setups, where they store, some have, um, car storage. I think this is the only boat RV, I know in the country, it's the only boat RV.
So, there's, there's, these, these things are clearly big enough for them to put the RV inside, they're not packed outside.
Correct.
There's, there's one of them that was topped, topped outside on that.
Yeah, because they didn't have any of these, these buildings built. So, these, these are the high-day buildings, um, so they're sized to put the RV inside them.
The alarm system that you have set up, um, you said it was an audible alarm. Now, I assume that that's gonna be connected to the autodiler, and probably be for in the office. Is there an outside beacon?
So, you'll have a beacon outside, linking that's, that's on the end of the building, um, the security camera, the autodiler, would bring them remotely, so you could put in that column of numbers on the autodiler.
I, I'm just concerned, uh, Saturday afternoon, and the alarm's going off all weekend long. So, it's just a beacon and lights.
No, no, sir. So, so out here, it is, but they would also get an alarm beeping inside the office. They would also get a text message and call, saying, so then the op, the management would say, it's 24/7, you have a camper, you have an alarm going off, the tank is full, they would have their management to help.
Well, last year, we had an alarm going off, like you said, weekend, all weekend long, and it would get enormous time, my sister called the police, and, I mean, it, it took today some time, it shut off. Nobody was paying attention.
That's a fire alarm, so, not many fire alarms, unless you have a dressable fire alarm, uh, contact. They're, they're either, they dial the fire department, uh, larger commercial ones, I know.
As long as it ain't making noise all weekend long, I don't mind.
So, we, yeah, we could specify to you that it's only in the office is the audible alarm, and then it's gonna be the autodiler that calls them.
This one's right behind, and so can we, that seems like a reasonable request to, uh, to, uh, outdoor audible alarms.
Okay.
Okay, and that would mean any audible alarms, whatever, right? Out, outdoor audible, yeah, that's, nobody should, they're, this is to dial people or for...
Wouldn't it be possible to have phone number to call, or, they have a concern, have a phone number to call to talk to a person, so they wouldn't have to wait all...
We had to call the police numerous times, I saw.
Yeah, so the, the applicant, which is all purpose stores, that's, they have, they have website with their phone number and everything. I don't see, like, you wanna post a sign?
Impossible, not all of us are website.
Yeah.
But you said there is 24/7 management, so, uh...
Right, so if they're getting a call with this audible, one, they're getting autodiled to it, they're getting notified right away.
But should...
I'm almost more concerned that there's a fire alarm going off all weekend, that nobody knows about.
Right, right, so it wouldn't be much of an asset, if they're, they're 24/7 anyways, to have a posted phone number that somebody can call.
Yep. That seems reasonable.
Craig, we have a list of the things that we need to see specifically when they come back, if we check those off.
Uh, do you have that list?
I don't have that.
Uh, I don't need it. Uh...
Not necessarily for the...
It's nothing, sir. Uh, can you help us with that, Louis?
I can, I can walk through, I know what they were, to grab here, so...
Yes, you're so awesome. Why don't you start, uh, the whole part?
Yeah, so, the septic system before, we had, just called out here, uh, so it was asked to show exactly where it is, to maximize, so we had mentioned it's 13 feet, 25 feet, so this show on the state plan, it was perfect, uh... We're showing, you know, the septic tank where it comes in, but, uh, and then we added, uh, for a float sensor, so basically, this note for the septic holding tank will have a float sensor, audible alarm, beacon, and auto buzzer, to be installed, a dedicated circuit in this whole location, for its PVC pipe inlet with RV sewer duct or something. So, that was not on there. Then added notes for office and storage units cannot be used for housing. Sewage dump station is for unit renters only, no public dumping.
The video camera that's...
Yep, and then on the site, we have, uh, security camera.
Sorry, I need to move, but...
No, no, that's okay. Um, security camera, we also have it as a sign that showed sewage waste only, no hazardous waste, so that sign is, is here. Um, and then, we added the note on what the volume would be for septic alarm, because there was, uh, a concern on, on how much volume would be left of, so it's a bit, full. So, those were the items that we added.
Now, someone's monitoring it anyways, because they're paying to use this, I assume.
Yes, absolutely, they're paying, yeah, so they ran out all the units, um, and then the, the office manager, so they wanna have staff here, more office, so that's why they're, for, for holding the office, but...
It seems to me that you are the only thing that is contentious with everyone, is the unmonitored dumping station.
Craig?
Absolutely.
Uh, is there a remediation plan if there is still a septic?
There's not a remediation plan, um, so when we permitted this with the state, if they require us to listen to it, but it's just a holding tank, it's, it's pretty straightforward, bottom, rest areas along the highways now, and all various states are putting these out. Basically, just, well, it's just a tank, a couple of, just when you go, just when you go to a camper.
And don't reach the blood supply.
No, we're filled at all.
Strictly holding and then pop.
Correct.
I think, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, unmonitored is the, uh, is the...
Right, so, I mean, we have it now gated, it's on a security camera, and there's an alarm and everything, so...
So, I think you should unmonitor, it's not monitored.
So, are the clients charged to use that dumping station?
They're likely gonna pay a fee for it, if they want to.
So, by the gallon, or, or whatever the fee is, so...
Probably by the gallon.
Okay.
So, there, is there a, or by the gallon, if the capacity of your tanker is not a meter, that reads how much ga, gallon?
There's no meter, right, so if you, you have a Class A motorhome, an 80-gallon tanker, you have a smaller, uh, motorhome, what's, okay, on the 40?
Charge, charge, charge. Do you, how does the board feel about, uh, so, Megan, your question about litigation, you did address somewhat, to some degree, the burn around the dumping area, still containment, uh, which ran into a holding. Uh, does the board feel...
Can we have some sort of specifics on, uh, I mean, it, it just, I, I'm still not...
Yeah, I want to know containment.
Well, it, it's just how high or how large an area of earth be for containment area, you, you know what I mean, I, I guess I'm not trying to...
I would love for a standard curb light, because it's, it's either gonna be a four-inch or a six-inch height.
Isn't this stuff going to be covered on the state's evaluation for septic permit?
Is it?
I, I mean, like, I, I would think so, I don't know...
Yeah.
The details of, I just, I feel like the people who do state septic permit, they have to be more qualified than we are, with that, the safety of the septic.
But they are just, that seems to have a septic, uh, yeah, I think...
So I, I know for a fact the state is not gonna require it still.
Right.
Um, even if you do a gas, it's not very good, so you can put a double tank, it's whether it's cut roofs around it, those little roofs around the top of the concrete tank, that's your containment.
Yeah.
Or drainage deep roof. You know, and they do three up around. That's what they do for gasoline. So it wouldn't be required if the town wanted it, just to occur around the entire tank, and have a drainage back and set. And then we could have a tower.
How about a capacity of a, a class A motor, over thirty gallons, but have a hundred gallon capacity, uh, in the burned area? It seems excessive.
Yeah, it seems to be.
I would, yeah.
But I don't know the practical though.
Well, no, you know, that's not a very big area for storage.
The other thing we could do, so I know, uh, I used to have my underground storage for gasoline and oil tanks. Is for their filling in gas and oil tanks. It's a spill bucket, and it's built into the concrete, so you open up your mantle, you make your connection there, and it contains, you're able to hold either a five or fifteen gallon. So you would have a five gallon capacity around in that tank. If it, it leaked, would just be in that bucket, and then they would still suck it out. And a van will cover, recover, and play around with it.
And if it over, could you go, if it overflowed, can it go back to, can it go into the holding tank?
Yeah, I mean, you could have a higher, a higher, always line on that that drains into the tank. So if it went over five gallons, it'd drain back.
So how, what's, uh?
I, I'm just, I have concerns where it's unmonitored. And where it's down there, it's not a very busy area, and we have this raw sewage, and it's being, you know. Yeah, if nobody's paying attention, and all it takes is one person to really mop it up, and make a mess down there, and then they drive off, and they're like, I didn't do it. And of course, we get the video and everything else, but, but how long will that sit there before it comes to the attention of somebody? That there was a mess down there, and if the next guy comes in and doesn't say, hey, something happened down here, it wasn't me, but, you know, it's just, uh, that's my only concern. Um, it's not a high profile area, it's not a, you know, I hope you guys are busy, but, um.
The other thing, I mean, I could talk to our client, potentially we do it with a permit from the state, because only dumping if the management personnel is there. Someone will oversee it.
That, that was awful.
Fuck. Then at least someone's there watching it, hook up.
Yeah. Yeah, and they can check it after they, you know, after your clients, their, your clients leave, and then, you know, that can be part of their shutdown procedure with you. They, you know, um, that would address a lot of concerns.
That was my whole concern today, was that no one stayed.
You could never make it anywhere with that.
Right.
If they, if they mess up, it may probably.
If it was locked, and they can only use it when staff is on site. They staff unlocks it, they use it, staff goes, locks it up, they're looking at it.
Yeah.
So they know it's not a mess.
And if you want to take and, you know, where, that's where that telephone number that's posted comes into play. If somebody wants to dump their sewage, they can make that phone call, or make an appointment, you know, make that phone call, make, to make an appointment so they can use it, so. If they.
So how about holding, the holding tank will be locked except when, uh, uh, supervised by, uh, per, by the staff.
And I, uh, I retract my, my specification about holding.
Right, and so, that's all, so, that's all.
I think I could sort of strike that, and I think this would be a better, a better solution.
Okay, so.
It'd be similar if they went to a, to a plant to dump their garbage.
Right.
Super ghetto, that would be.
Most RV parts are supervised.
Yeah, they're locked in, so it's people from just dumping stuff in, or.
Yeah, that's valid.
So I'm going to summarize our, uh, things we're asking here for here, uh, the office and utility area both have, are in by an oxide, uh, protection in them. Uh, and that the CEPIC dumping hole, dump holding tank will be locked except when supervised by staff. There anything else, so no outdoor audible alarms. And posted twenty-four seven phone number. That's one, two. Three, four. All right, I guess we're looking for. So we look, we, we'd like to see that on the flat, right? You mean, right?
Yes, I'd like to, I can, uh, have plans dropped off, but not, that was only not for another board meeting, that would have been important for our state purposes.
Right. Uh, how does the board feel about that? Uh, so that would mean we were, uh, conditioned precedent. Uh, so, are we looking for a motion?
Motion on the condition precedent on the four noted condition precedents. A motion.
We're looking for that. Okay. Uh, any more discussion? Right, let's take the vote. All those in favor, a nine line.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Mr. Carter, thank you for your patience. Good discussion.
I just want to, or, you know, check, I have a friend, I see you at our conference right now.
You can take a poll.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Carter. I hear you're losing a guy. I hear you're losing a, an employee. We are. We, uh, that was so sad. We hired our new office coordinator outreach person the same day he gives us. Uh, we know the feeling, you know, so, uh, going to Arizona. He's going to Arizona, it's nice there. So this is that tale already. You know, I, 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 I was expecting it, he's been a nice add, you know, for his thirty years experience, it's nice to tap into that. We did a nice job, we worked from Panama for six weeks. So it was coming. Yeah. Look, can we have the, uh, so thank you for those that, uh, filled out the implementation spreadsheet, so that we might, we'll, and code it up, uh, a summary. Kind of interesting themes. More, more, no, no more, well.
Oh, 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 I didn't see.
Sorry. So, so we, we actually filled in, and, uh, there was one planning board member who, uh, gave us double checks. Thank you. So I highlighted those with the, uh, the lighter color, which is really gold, but it didn't come across, but if you can see, which is double checks to show that's, it's on, on prioritization, I'll check. But, um, I wanted to go through and just make sure that these ring true for you, because then we can build the text of the implementation chapter. Really, what we're trying to do is highlight those four or five things that you as a board wanna say, okay, these are really what's important to us, you can, you can, you can drill down, and there's lots of information about all these other recommendations, but, uh, you know, this is what we wanna highlight. So, and, and also just noting, you know, I like that ongoing column too, just, you know, this should be always on. Great, thank you for all your notes.
Thank you for pushing to get this through for us.
So, so the, your notes we can use in, in, uh, in the narrative as well. So this is kind of how you bring the whole master plan together. The, um, I was a little struck by the lack of futurists, or lack of high priority interest in the trails committee and all these trails. And I think that was kind of the theme of all of them.
I think that's because it's a, it's a, it's a.
Okay.
I remember when I just finished.
And, and really how that spins off, it's the, just the idea that trails committee is, you know, you know, to, uh, just doing the work of the trails committee. Okay, so, so less, more so, that's, that's a conservation commission half versus your half.
Uh, I would also think it was partly, obviously there are a lot of people who use, so they don't, you know, like, there aren't any.
Um, I spent some time allowing trails committee last night. They, you know, it's hard to get trails committees started. They, they're a great example of, they have their to-do list, and they're knocking things off, and when there's a bridge, they take over on that as a group. They, they have a, they have a, a solid working group.
Yeah, that's good.
So, so I just wanted to show you the summary, and if there's something that, that, you know, versus a blank spreadsheet, if there's anything that kind of jumps out at you that that seems out of place. But, you know, we can, we can use this then, again, to build up that chapter and to highlight the top four or five things. And there are some themes here, which, you know, four or five asterisks showing a high priority. The, um, you kind of bring it home on the final page, but it just be grandiose. And, you know, some of those things, it's actually kind of nice, and we'll put in the text that you, you, you're well on the path to these things. Like possible change to something, and, uh, sub-rates, and, uh, encouraging the use of cluster. Because I think there, there could be a couple of other things that, that you could do, but, uh, you, you covered a lot of territory, that's about it. So I, I guess I would ask, do we wanna see if there's anybody else that wanna have fill it out? The, uh, can I get a quick, a few more? So what's on the front page, just two, like, using an objective one, for example. Where objective one, the very first line is two stars in low, two stars in medium, stars. Does that mean that's where the individual scored? So, so. So one star equals?
One person.
One than you with your highlighted colors. Okay. Thank you. So, use improved natural resource data, if it comes available to identify areas of microconservation. Not so exciting from the planning board's perspective, it's a priority, but it's not, you know, something that you're beating down the doors to do.
So when I was thinking about that, I, uh, I think I chose, chose medium and ongoing, and, uh, so if.
And a couple of.
I was concerned about some, if there wasn't something ongoing, that, that, I did, were concerned. That, that's how I, uh, I use the word, uh, continue. A few words, a lot's got to be.
Sure. Yeah. And, and that's, I think that's a kind of a, I, we'll emphasize that in the chapter, but I also wanted to point out those things, you know, um, under objective two, protect from surface waters, groundwater, and water sheds, ensure clean drinking, water resins. Yes, that's, that's a clearly a high priority, you got a double dip from Rich, so. Uh, you know, that's, that's kind of what you're, we're, we're leading with those kind of high, higher priorities in the implementation chapter. And just because we're not leading, you know, it's not, it's a lower, it's a medium priority, or makes it, you give a low, it's still a master plan, it's just, these are, these are the highlights.
Uh, maybe if you, so, how, how is this going to be booked in the implementation chapter of the master plan? Just take what, uh, you know, one, say, objective two promotes the use of clusters of different. How would these, uh, ratings be, uh, incorporated in the master plan presentation?
So the way that I would do that is I would have all these objectives in here, like, use this to say, these are the higher priorities. So we could, you know, and we could aggregate, you know, ha- have an average, I mean, you know, if you've got two low and two medium, that's not saying much. You know, it's just a lower priority, so the idea was to highlight the, those top eight. Here are all the objectives, but here's the key. There are a number of them that are ongoing. I'm not sensing that there's, you know, I mean, this week, these were, I think, six or seven. There was one that had two together, but, um, you know, pretty good scoring to, to, so we can use this in the next couple of weeks to pull that chapter together and highlight the things, and I, I think there really aren't a lot of surprises, but I want to go through the scoring process.
You asked, are there other, should, should I pick one else or, uh, two? So, would that be, would that be select board?
Conservation commission is the very. Yeah. I, I would love for the conservation commission as a group to fill it out. Uh, I'd be happy to go to select board and walk through it. What's your feeling about that? Select board was interested in that, probably take twenty minutes to walk through it. Yeah. But meetings, for some reason, are going two or three hours. I can always go to talk to Ken. Go die. Um, let me talk to Ken and see if there's a, there's a, a gap in your meetings, but, you know, we'll need to add.
I'd be great for them to be invited to participate, uh, and if they can't, if they're too busy, or some, figure out a way to have another way to, to deal with it, but that, that should be to ask them if they would like to be, of course, uh, outreach.
Let's do that. We'll work on the chapter as we're at, in the meantime, but see, traditional kind of, and it's nice to, you know, we can feed in, here are the select boards' three key implementation recommendations, here's from a conservation commission perspective. Here's where all three kind of connect. That's, that's a nice process.
Oh. Yeah, oh. Conservation commission, uh, what does that mean, just sending this to the, sending this to Kelly and, uh?
Let's send it over to Kelly, and if Kelly wants me to come in, I can. Okay, they're an expert.
That's on June thirteenth this month, so.
We'll catch you, we'll catch you in a minute.
Will you send that to her?
Sure.
It should go in action like. Uh, so you're going to do that with conservation commission, and you have also with Ken, or? Thank you.
And, you know, in the meantime, if you see something that, you know, kind of doesn't reflect, you know, what we can talk about now, you can send me an email. I, I enjoy Richard's comments on the, uh, the facilities chapter. Since we've, uh, snapped.
Sunday morning home, right? You're just the best.
It is a good time for stuff like this.
It is. Uh, so, uh, we should move on to that.
Sure, so, so that, that's what I was hoping. This is what, this is our first draft, this is what our scoring was, we'll touch a couple of others points, but this chapter has come together pretty good because we worked it out. And, uh, other board member questions on this before we move on? Okay.
It's one of the processes.
Um, it digested. Um, so our new staff person was one of the first jobs I, so, I've got these, let's try to put it, and, uh, we're talking about color schemes, and, uh, yes.
Uh, so, community facilities, I've also been, just had some, uh, they keep comments with Kelly, the easiest way to deal with is to hand them off to you.
Please.
But there are a few items that I could, or, uh, address.
And that's what I was hoping that, you know, so, so we got thirty I comments that we've incorporated a bunch in, I've got a, a working draft. And, uh, the more edits, you know, it's, it's, there's a lot in there, and, and we've done our deep dive, but I think again, it's those things that you wanna emphasize as well. And, and sometimes if, if we've caught it in the last hour or four, maybe it's a little faded, so we wanna make sure it's in time. Based now, right now.
I think in your, in your community board. Right, and this would be a good time to, uh, this is Lenore.
Yes.
Excellent.
I'm on. Yes, you had your line. That's what I was hoping that we would be doing tonight.
Well, I, I just, yes, I'm just, you know, to not, to, to say about energy. You can, and, since, that I printed out. Picture it out.
Uh huh.
It's really pretty minimal. Um, considering the state of world right now, and, you know, global warming and everything else that's going on, I, I'd love to see every, uh, statement of some kind scored looking about their can vary my D in terms of you're a hundred percent used by the town, net zero, highest here. Um, it gives us a framework that we can, you know, to push out all this, you know, maybe power and energy. We're all working on different projects, and it's sort of like, well, doing our own thing, and very helpful to have.
Sure, and I was just talking last, last winter about that, and making sure that, you know, the master plan could help your committee, you know, forward. So I think anything that, you know, this is the time to talk.
Uh, on page twelve, and I have a copy of the, I'm trying to, so we.
Yeah.
Do you have it?
Yeah, I do.
Okay. So this is what we have for utilities, electric, and, uh, uh, so, uh, we're gonna, you wanna see this?
Yeah, no, I just want to see what I know. That's my, all my comments were by one.
Yep. Sorry.
Five eighty.
Five fifty. Five eighty, seventy, five fifty. So, uh. I know the board has talked about this, you came in, you came in and talked to us about this before. And I, I feel that there's support for something exactly what it is, but, uh. But what the words are is what we've come up with. And so what's the best way for, for, that is a free to, but we're a big other, I think we could do that.
Well, we should include the energy committee.
No, absolutely.
Yeah, and I think maybe the three, you and our community power and energy probably, uh, statement.
I, I could see like a set side box to give a little bit more visibility and, uh. However, a statement, you know, some vision, some goals that then allow, you know, we've got. You know, we haven't gone over the, the recommendations out of the facility chapter, so that's that final, um. Um, so it's the perfect time to talk about. I'd be happy to go over to the energy committee or what, that's a good time.
A couple of things I recall is, uh, tweaking zoning hopefully so to, uh. Allow, which right now we don't have anything, have commercial, our scale, so. So that would be, uh, a change in our zoning, to help make that more possible. Do you have a meeting this month?
Uh, we have a meeting, yes, I can keep him. Um, but I'll tell you why, why don't we communicate in email? I would get in touch with, uh, Jeff Eltra, who's the chairman of. And we'll try to set up a three. And I think that would be the easiest thing, try to come up with something. And then if you don't want to, our lofty.
Yeah, that's. That's the time to filter it, but yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
This is, and this is exactly what the master plan is for. Incorporating everything. Word one. N T A R.
Uh, um, yeah, I'm not sure I have.
N T A R. S C M.
The other results were a page, the E A P.
Yes.
About master plan goals.
Yes.
You wrote it.
It's quite long, and I think, you know, certainly this is the foundation statement.
We have a, an option, we have an appendix option where we can refer to something. Add some more specific detail.
That would be great. It's already in the E A P document in the chat.
That works like, if you were sending that.
Yeah, consider the email.
Okay, like power went out again at our house just the other day, energy independence, that, the batteries, uh. I know it's with, it's a, it seems like a long reach right now, but, uh.
Well, I think if we have that stated goal or stated. Direction that we want to go in, it's going to be a lot easier to get around, I'd also say it's included in the master plan. You know, that's, it's all good together, so. Sounds to me. And so.
Yeah.
All this stuff we've.
That'd be great.
Yeah, okay.
There's so many new ways of storing that.
All right.
There we go.
Uh, so, uh, if anyone, if anyone has any clues on this that you want to, uh, jump into? Or Mike, did you have a plan?
I was hoping to get as many comments from you as possible. Should I? Well, it's my moment, where. I think we got all your edits, but they, I didn't, they were not discussed before, they were done in, uh. Yeah, I, I, I think, you know, our approach would be to come in and show everything that was changed. And, and, you know, so we'll have your comments from then and then any comments that we made from this original.
Could be added to it.
Yes, for us to look at in bold.
Okay. So my new questions were in the library section. Uh, what was the, what's the source of that material?
Reports.
Reports and, uh, it seems that we should do some outreach to the library before we publish this and, uh. It, uh, seems like, oh, you just. Lenore, you're done.
Lenore, I think that Lenore said everything she.
She did.
So, uh, a website also, I just happened upon. It was a book and I was looking for it, so I went to the Oakland Flyer and a lot of the statements and the courage that you used. Uh, right on, uh, Oakland Flyer site.
Right, uh, I, it seems to me that, that it would be a good courtesy to the.
We'll, we'll, we'll do a.
Review that like.
Be happy to.
Critical figures. Library, I think should be filled out.
Some, some work, wording seems a little awkward or, uh, anyway. Uh, and then the other one I loved about was Shaker Village. Something that jumped out to me is it refers to it as a working farm where it's really like, uh.
All my.
Open air, street, they call it, uh, outdoor history.
They're not farming.
Uh, they have cows that escape every now.
Those are birthed cows, no, I mean, I mean, and.
We could check your. Yeah, it's not.
Because they have a mission statement that isn't well written. We have. Give something for crazy old can of her comment, or have a comment or we're all down.
It's the agricultural way of having this.
Yes.
I have some question.
I'm sorry, Lenore.
I have some questions about birthed pens.
For lack thereof.
They have either very smart cows or someone insufficient classes.
Uh, so the, the other comments I've made in prior, are much smaller, less in, great, less important, you know, like. Like the group sewer and group well search, like the store as well as.
I think I'd wrap those edits. And have some jump.
I do, I'd like to, uh, put it a little more presentable format.
An email would be great.
Just take a picture there. For matching.
So, uh, we'll leave it in the number, in the number format until we.
I never get close, get closer. So if you have more to say or on this or the board questions to comment.
I just have a question, uh, C I P updates, there's a. I thought you might.
The C I P update? Uh, I can, I didn't, under new business, I have, we can do it fast. The select board is often not to proceed with C I, with, uh, further C I P work at this time. I don't know whether there is a projected date when they would like to start up again, but until, uh. They approve, looking forward on that.
That's why I said.
Yeah, okay.
Uh. So, uh, that's me, Mike, or I guess Mike said to me that we need to have another hearing. Uh, this, this community facilities chapter and the implementation chapter have not had published yet.
Correct.
Uh. When is the early?
We're trying to wrap this up. I think it's as soon as we can power through the implementation chapter. Cause community facilities, I think, must be more circle with the, the, the staff, and we should be ready to go the next time.
Well, when is our next meeting? Be, uh, July ninth.
So, and we need to notice that our, our goal would say to have the drafts for you to say, yeah, let's go, let's move forward on July ninth. So then you could have the, the, the hearing in your second meeting, July.
Uh huh.
So we are.
Gives us a good reason to, to get with Conservation Commission.
So that would be the last public thing? Saying that?
Yes. I would honestly. I think we should say that.
Well, it's just that when the board finally comes to close on the master plan, it's seen.
Yeah, it's a regular meeting, it's just like a regulation. Just with notice.
So it's on both community facilities and implementation.
Yeah.
One, and, and actually a third chapter. As we have the vision, it's a summary of all the recommendations, it's a summary of the vision from each chapter. So a vision chapter, you know, if you want to have that, you want the chapters, and we'll have that ready for you. It's basically a summary of all chapters.
So what do we call that, uh, summary vision? Vision, vision chapter.
Vision chapter.
So it's three, we're listing three things that we're noticing.
But. For the board on July nine, and then the public July.
Great.
And well, I was sending like, what am I going to notice in the alphabet? Short line.
Thank you. Yes, and so we'd also need one. To, uh, reach out on the news, give the, uh, town email. We're too late for the, we're too late for church newsletter.
Do you want it in tonight's email?
In what?
Tonight's email?
Uh, well, it's the ninth.
It'll be for July the twenty-third.
Oh, it can wait till next.
Wait till next.
Yeah, because we just got, trying to get the draft before, the meeting before.
It's good. I'd like to see it twice July fourth, the two weeks, but. Sound a little reading, I put out twice, once, two weeks, maybe a little. So that's the hearings. Okay, so, uh, I'd like to bring this up now while you're here, Mike. Uh, I had an inquiry from Conservation Commission about, um, why we don't have a wetland offer in our ordinance. Uh. And they have asked, they are planning to discuss that at your next meeting in July. And we're wondering if they're sort of hoping that somebody from this group would be interested and he'll, he would have that.
What day is that?
Uh. Should be. Conservation Commission?
Yes.
See the second.
Yeah, I'll give you a.
Yeah. The first, the Manhattan Association. Logan, did I feel that you had some?
What time is that? Seven, that's awesome. Um, yeah, I mean, I can throw it most.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Did I do here?
Yes.
Uh, and so that's a heads up for you, that's something. You mentioned the other day, it's not, uh, uh, unavailable for some. More of them, but.
We've talked about the workforce central, there's plenty available to, to workforce housing and a couple of things related. And to Beston Hampshire. And they've prepared a report of, uh, tax, they've already been through the process. Had a successful company, had a nice talk with folks from Beston Hampshire. So, uh, that wouldn't cover the wetlands, but we could, we could finish this.
Roll with the department into the process. Uh, and, uh, and just a quick update on workforce housing and why. Our workforce housing reg was done many, many years ago and.
There's a lot of legalese in there and you have to serve. There are certain thresholds based on line of commissions. How, uh, you know, numbers, share numbers. It's, it's not really an ordinance that says, you know, if you do this. Now, and, and it's, you know, you, it doesn't create a. It doesn't react to statute. So we could walk through some options, there's some very simple options and some less simple options to, to try to get some, some more, you know, workforce or port law. If there are certain, you know, certain things that.
But I. Correct me if I'm wrong, but when Mike, I think about it, if our ordinance did not align with our expectation. Then we lose our ability to have significant influence on how it happens.
So we could wa, walk through all those options, maybe, you know, I, who knows what that really means to the changes in your ordinance, but, but, you know. I think it is pretty dated and it's not, it's not what they do.
Anything else from you?
Other than, sounds like the dates, Conservation Commission's meeting after next time we meet. From one period into implementation chapter. So I'll check with Kelly if there's a comfort level. I. Before they.
Thank you.
Good, thank you. Any other questions from the board tonight?
Thank you.
That brings us two minutes.
It's a little. Uh, we need a motion to move the minutes so then we can discuss them, some work, looking for a second. Thank you, global. Uh, did you get any input on that, so? Uh, does anyone? Have any? Questions, concerns, that we'd like to address? I do not. Thank you. I do not. All right, then, uh, I guess we can call the vote on the minutes. All the papers?
Aye.
Same.
Yes. And then we can cut to forums. Uh. Other business, I brought up a couple of things that were on my list, there's one other thing I have, which is. Uh, select board has put out a access to town council policy, uh, so I'll just read it to us. Purpose to ensure the access to town council is controlled in order to maintain a record of opinion. Purpose, to ensure the access to town council is controlled in order to maintain a record of opinions. To ensure that budgetary limitations are maintained. The select board has the obligation under RSA forty one nine to, to approve and expend to tax dollars and establish an appropriate internal purpose. Appointment of town council. Select board is the sole appointing authority for town. Only the select board may appoint town council, special council, all we. Policy. It is the policy of the select board that access to town council shall go through the select board or through the town administrator. Select board is not available. Only department heads or committee chairs shall be able to contact town council and must do so with prior explicit approval provided by the select board. Though everyone knows, I just. And, uh, so the, I guess this, the town has run up, uh. Higher legal expenses, uh, this year than both four and, uh, it's a little bit over budget. Uh, issues with the trial board has come to, uh, some of those, but not all of them. It's just, uh, seems to me a normal procedure. Uh, and I guess if anybody's got problems with it, the select board's the place to touch. And that, uh, okay, uh, let me also address, um. Rules of procedure. Uh, I apparently missed an email to Bois Surly right after the last minute meeting where she asked if she should post. Notice that we were talking about rules of procedures tonight. I missed the email, I didn't respond. Notice hasn't been posted, so we shall not be talking about them. Uh, so let's make, uh, let's post for the next, uh, meeting.
Can we get some sort of? Regarding the rules of procedures, an updated draft of what has been approved? And maybe the stuff that's still on there that hasn't been approved or that has been pushed to be added to that. That's like.
Yeah.
Five versions.
Yes, and I, I also find it. So, uh.
Yeah. And we were waiting for some stuff that you were discussing. Town council, okay?
Yes, and, uh, and, uh, uh, communications with town council will be much slower now. Yes, I, so we depend some, uh, so the municipal association advice is not something paid for by the hour. Uh, membership, uh, so.
Do we have a lead question from whatever source? Nice to talk about.
Probably not all of them, but most of them.
So if we could get a fresh copy.
Yeah.
That would be, that would be very helpful.
Yeah.
Uh, and that brings us to other business, new business.
Motion to.
Second it. Aye, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you, everyone.